Everybody, this is the Planning Board meeting of October 9th, 2018. And if we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, if I may, I'm gonna take, we have a bunch of public hearings tonight, and I'm gonna take the first one and put that on the end. So we're gonna start with number two, which is a continuation of a public hearing on the application of Ediville Land Holdings requesting a special permit approval pursuant to sections 2230 and 5300 of the Cava zoning bylaw located at Pine Street in Cava, Mass. And plans are prepared by Arthur F. Borden Associates, Inc., dated November 2nd, 2017, showing the paving and associated drainage on an existing parking lot on two sheets for said development.
Good evening.
How was everybody?
Good, tonight on this summer-like evening.
I know it, huh?
We'll take it.
Snow will be here before you know it. Shh. Okay, Arthur, you wanna...
Okay, since we were last here, we've accomplished a few of the outstanding issues, one of which was the license agreement for the parking spaces within the Pine Street right-of-way. Selectmen approved that the other night at their meeting. There's a small copy of those plans that I brought along for ya. The area highlighted in orange, other parking spaces within the right-of-way for Pine Street. Pine Street, the constructed part of Pine Street does not follow the layout that the county commission has laid out several, many, many years ago. As a result, we, Ediville's been using that area for parking for a long time. They got notice by Fussin' O'Neil, and in the process, they're going through the design phase here, and we've worked with the selectmen to come up with a license agreement that allows us to continue parking there. In the process of that, we're also gonna be doing some study on Pine Street itself, see what we can do to help alleviate the drainage situation that's out there. That's also part of the license agreement.
It's also, by the way, this is Arthur Borden from Arthur Borden Associates, and I'm John Dele Percoli from Ediville. Part of that license agreement is the town participating as well. I don't know if anybody's read it, but the license agreement contemplates the town participating in, it's a combination effort. And Arthur mentioned it's been a long time. It's actually been 75 years that the Ediville's been parking on that spot, so it's a long, long time. It just has to do with the dysfunctional way it was laid out.
The other two outstanding items that were accomplished, we met with Jen and Stephen about some of the items that we're looking for. We've added a location for a bike rack. It's immediately on the pedestrian walkway, so that anybody that chooses to use a bike to get to Ediville now has, will have a place to park it, and immediate access to the pedestrian walkway to the entrance. The other thing we noted, we were short on onsite landscaping by approximately 18,000 square feet. We've done a little studying, and we'd like to make some improvements to landscaping at the Pine Street Rochester Road intersection, in lieu of that, and possibly at the intersection of Rochester and South Main. Make it more of an attractive gateway to Ediville. That's what we've accomplished.
During the process, we had gone to Conservation Commission, and they had, there was a few parking spaces that were temporarily, that were eliminated in the right-hand corner. You wanna point that out, Arthur? Right over there. Those have been added in. I've worked with the Conservation Commission to add those back in. We're gonna be revising the NOI, so just for full disclosure, the 14 spaces that I currently have are gonna remain. They're not being deleted due to the Conservation Commission. We've worked that out. Obviously, we're getting a revised NOI to reflect that, and that's in the pipeline as well, just so everybody's clear.
Well, I'll jump in. I'm really happy to see the bike paths on here, 'cause that's important. I've said before the importance of biking and your area specifically. As for the off-site landscaping, I think that's something we can definitely talk about. Your suggestions are good, but I think that's something that we should work with you guys on to find the best place to do that, maybe working with the DPW. So I want that to happen, and I want it to be a collaboration for that decision. And I wanna make sure that it happens, too, that the extra 18,000 square feet does get done.
Well, I'm not gonna commit to 18,000 square feet. I'm gonna commit to two locations, and the square footage is what it is. I'm not gonna say it's 18,000, or 16,000, or whatever. I think being committed to off-site mitigation for parking lots, when I'm being held to a standard others aren't, I think is pretty generous on our end. So I'm not gonna sit here and say it's 18,001, or 15,020. It's gonna be a collaborative effort, which I agree with, and on those two locations to help enhance public space.
Can I ask who from the town you discussed those two locations with, deciding on those two locations?
Well, since we're paying for it, I think it would make sense to enhance the entryway to Ediville and benefit the neighborhood, since they're the ones most impacted by Ediville's activity.
And I'm not saying that shouldn't be done, but I do think that this decision should be made together. And when Stephen and I were speaking with Mr. Borden about that, we, no specific area was discussed. It was, let's do this in the future. So I don't think tonight, those two areas should be steadfast agreed upon, especially since we haven't seen those two areas.
Right. I'm just not interested in doing something, you know, over yonder. I wanna do something that would directly impact my neighbors in a positive way, and something that would benefit our guests in a positive way. I'm not thrilled with doing anything, but I'm willing to do that as a compromise.
So that's what we'll do? We'll look into that into the future, then? And we'll work together to...
It benefits everybody, and I'm happy to do it. I think you see how I take care of my property on 58, and I'm gonna do something similar on those properties, those little islands, or whatever you wanna call them.
Yeah, I just hope the square footage is closer to the 18,000 that's missing.
Well, you know, all square footage isn't corrected, isn't the same. The impact you can make in certain areas that's highly visible, where these locations are, could actually do more than just random open space that nobody even cares about. You know, from a visual standpoint, this could make a big impact from an aesthetic point of view, and I think that's what we wanted to focus on, is the overall aesthetics, and making it pleasing to the eye, and making it a better neighborhood, you know, from an aesthetic point of view.
Yeah, I agree.
That's all.
I would just like to see those two specific spots before I'm comfortable saying totally yes, but I think those are two appropriate places.
Okay. Well, that's good. Thank you.
Anything else, Jen?
I don't think so, not speaking to those two points.
Well, do you have anything else, anything to say?
Yeah, I just have a couple, just one question for you, John, or Art. Photometrics plan, I understand that that's still in the works. I understand that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. So I don't have a problem with conditioning it, that photometrics plan will be approved by our engineer before you guys start construction. I don't have a problem with that. One of the comments I do wanna make, this has come a long way. Obviously, you're a great partner in the town. The article in the newspaper speaks volumes to the type of neighbor that you are in the community. So I will say this, that the type of landscaping that we're looking for, and I don't wanna disagree with my fellow board member, but also the amount of drainage that you're trying to address that is off-site, not on your site, and you're trying to take care of in conjunction with, working with the town, speaks volumes to me. I think that's just a good business aspect. I think it's being a good neighbor, trying to address a problem that's been down there for a while. The agreement that the town has made with you on using those parking spots, I believe, was a good idea. So I commend you on coming forth on a lot of things that we were very far apart on, and we worked hard at trying to come here. I will commend Ms. Jen for meeting with you guys and talking with Art, and working on different aspects. That's what we do here, and you did well, and I'm really happy with the outcome of what you've accomplished. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from board members?
Sure. I'm gonna comment on what Will was mentioning about the lights. And I know at one point, I had wanted to somehow try to break up that large space. However, I have to agree with Will that I think it's a fantastic idea to try to do some more landscaping, even though it isn't exactly where we'd like to see it, and isn't exactly a breakup of that large area. But I do appreciate the fact that you are working with your neighbors and trying to, you know, go above and beyond what you're, what you are doing over there. So I too appreciate that. It would be nice to specifically, like Jen said, to work with the town and to have some kind of layout and a landscape, you know, detail for those particular areas that you're talking about. But I do wanna say, I think it's really great that you're trying to take care of that major problem that has been going on for quite a while.
It's an issue that we didn't cause, you know?
Exactly.
It's an issue that, I think it's just one of these things that multiple grade changes have happened in the road over the years, and, you know, it's just the way it is, and there's only one way really to fix it. So it has to be fixed with our participation, and, you know, I'm always up for working with the town on any project, so that's, I think it's part of, it's part of being a good corporate neighbor, and obviously, you see the merits in that as well, so I appreciate the good words.
Anyone else? Well, I'd just like to thank you for, you know, I think this plan is really gonna be a big help to the neighborhood. I think it's gonna help with their drainage problems, and it's good to see that. I think it's gonna look beautiful in front of Ediville, and so it's taken a while, but this is really gonna help the neighborhood. So I'm glad that this is finally coming about, and I really thank you for having Arthur work with Jen to look at this landscaping and to sit down and talk with us. That was really helpful, really helpful.
One thing, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna make sure that whatever we're doing, that somebody makes a note that, you know, a subsequent plan will be coming along, showing those 14 spaces, that's, you know, I don't want any surprises that you think something changed. I just wanna just make sure you know that. As long as it's in the minutes, or whatever, I'm fine with it. It's just, you know, obviously, we have a few open issues that we still have to supply more things with, which I'm sure we'll do long prior to construction, to your satisfaction.
All right, now that the board has spoken, we haven't closed the public meeting yet, so is there anyone out there that would like to have any comments? If you could just step up to your microphone and give us your name and address, please?
Hi, I'm Carrie Santos, 22 Pine Street. I just wanna say that, you know, our neighbors have come and complained over the years, and he has done everything that he said he was going to do. And unfortunately, with the inception of the sidewalk, I came to the board, I came to the town and said, and I do think it's part of the town's problem, that my yard has never flooded in years, and its last two years, it's been uncontrollable. They said to me, you need to hire your own architects and your own surveyors to come out, which I did, and I wrote a letter to the town and submitted it, and I know that you've been working on it, and I haven't really heard much, but then I saw the article in the Cava Reporter this week, and that's why I'm here, 'cause it said, "Come to find out what the issue is," and I also know that you're going to rip, not rip up, but do construction on Allen's property, which abuts mine, so I just wanna know what it's all about, and what can we look forward to?
Okay, Carrie, what really the plan is in the office, finishing up the last finishing touches, but to address Carrie's point, it's really not on Allen's property, it's actually in the right-of-way, and what it is, is catch basins that the town and I are gonna work together, and what it really boils down to, I think there's three catch basins approximately, but probably a minimum of three, and those three catch basins are gonna collect the water where it's currently running into, and then we're enlarging the stormwater management system on our property. So I'm actually taking the town's water and discharging it on our property, 'cause there's no other way to do it. In other words, there's nowhere to go on private property outside, so that's essential. And then the town has agreed to provide the materials, and I'm providing the labor, in a nutshell. So that's, you know, it's a little bit more than that, but that's really the crux of it for the folks at home. And it does solve a problem that I think has just been, you know, kicked the can forever, and consequently, you know, these neighbors, and everybody loves the sidewalk, because if you remember way back, we, everybody wanted the sidewalk as, for safety reasons, and we did that. And we restriped the road, too, but, you know, but every action is a reaction, right? So this, consequently, it did probably change a little bit of the drainage ways. I'm not exactly sure. I think some of the drainage problems preexisted, all these issues, and, but I think we're gonna go with this program that we have laid out right now. I think, I think a lot of the issues will be resolved. I mean, nothing's ever perfect, but this will go a long way to resolving it.
Do we have new drainage calculations for those new catch basins? Or is new calculations required?
I talked with Stephen and Fussin' O'Neil, and we're gonna do a little separate plan of the corrective action, and then there'll be revised calculations go to them to review, so.
Oh, okay.
It's kinda like a supplemental project, Mr. Chairman, you know, that's going, but it's all part of it. Obviously, we're, this whole thing is a package, and, you know, and I know you may not have everything there in your pack at 100%, but it's all in motion, and it's, everybody knows what they have to do, and there's still, you have the, you're obviously gonna be reviewing these, the supplemental Fussin' O'Neil analysis, you're gonna, because of the photometrics anyway, right? And then you're gonna be looking at the landscaping plan that we propose, and then you can comment on that. This work is all contemplated, you know, obviously for the spring at this point, so that's, but we gotta get the permitting out of the way, so we can start gearing up and start to collect the, you know, this is a huge investment on our end, just so you know, all this work that's contemplated, so.
Thank you. Anyone else have any other comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing for Ediville?
Second.
They have a motion to second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we've closed the public hearing, and so we'll, if we do a plan approval tonight, we'll condition the photometric plan, drainage, revised drainage calculations, and landscaping plan.
And just, just so that way I'm clear, the revised parking spaces...
Yes.
On the plan, that'll come back in front of us, or for the revised parking that's on that side?
It's the exact parking that's there, it's just, it's just the Conservation Commission, Will, this is just a point of clarification, just, for whatever reason, they were confused, it just ended up not getting approved the way it should've. So the 14 spaces that are currently being used today, the only difference is, is that they're gonna be paved, and the drainage is already accounted for. So it's just a matter of paved versus unpaved. So we'd like to, so to answer your question, Will, I'm glad you're willing to bring it up again, because along with these other three open issues, I'd like to make sure that the parking issue is addressed as well.
Most in particular, maybe Art, you can help me with this, is exact, exactly where that is on the plan, like the northeast side, northwest, southwest side?
Yeah, the northeast side of the parking lot.
Next to the Washburn bog there, the former Washburn bog, Will.
Thank you. I just wanna be clear when we do it, that's all. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the special permit for Ediville's revised parking plan with the following conditions. Number one, the photometrics plan to be provided and approved by Fussin' O'Neil before construction is to begin. Number two, the revised drainage calculations, including the drainage calculations for Pine Street, to be submitted and revised by Fussin' O'Neil. Number three, the landscaping plan that we have talked about, the off-site landscaping plan. And number four, will be revised, revised 14 spaces paved on the northeast side next to the old Washburn bog. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
So they have a motion, and a second? Any further discussion?
No.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
While they're still here, do you wanna do the, the sign, signed permit that's enclosed in our package for them while they're up here?
Mr. Chairman, if I may? This application was submitted partly to correct a minor, and I say minor, because frankly, that's really what it was, a minor design change from what has been approved by this board previously, to reflect, John, if I'm not mistaken, to reflect what's there now, correct?
Right, well, what happened was, no, we, we had a sign approved. This was the original sign. You guys remember it, right? And then we came back and we modified it to this sign, which is very similar. And that sign came in from the sign guy, and it was damaged. So consequently, it's another three weeks, so we put up a temporary sign, but this sign carried us through to the 18th, that original permit, the revised permit for this sign brought us through to the 18th, I think, Stephen, the 18th of September or something?
That's correct, yeah.
So it's slightly out of, out of time. But this is the sign we're putting there. It's just that it came in damaged. They're made, I guess, off-site, and they're obviously made off-site, but they're made out of state, and consequently, because of that, we had to have some sign, so we put a temporary sign there just to help guide the people in. This is expected to arrive within four weeks, so obviously, we hope it's there for Christmas, and that would be that, so whatever the board thinks I need to do, we'll do. But we're not changing anything.
So you're looking for an extension of the, of the approved sign?
So I'd like an extension, say...
60 days?
Yeah, 60 days would be, allow for some delays.
That's gonna take us into what, till the November, December?
October, yeah, December 9th?
Other than that, everything remains the same, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody have a problem with taking it to January 9th? Weather? You guys good? I'll make a motion to extend the sign for Ediville to January 9th, 2019.
I'll second that.
So you have a motion and a second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thanks, Joe.
All right. Good night, folks. Thank you, John. All right, John?
Thanks.
Thank you. So the second on the agenda is an application of, let me see, of David Mulcahy, and I'll read the public hearing notice right now. "In accordance with the provisions of the Town of Cava zoning bylaw and subdivision rules and regulations, the Cava Planning Board will hold a public hearing on October 9th, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the Cava Town Hall, Meeting Room 1, on the application of David Mulcahy, 1929 Development LLC of Kingston, requesting a site plan review pursuant to sections 2230, 3100 of the Cava zoning bylaw for a property located at 157 North Main Street on Assessors Map 24-Lot Foray in Cava, Mass. Applicants request approval to construct an addition of a craftsman/tradesman building to an existing family dwelling on the high commercial zone. Any persons interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the plan is on file at the Planning Board office and may be reviewed during normal business hours. Cava Planning Board, Bruce Mackie-Chia, and the publishing dates were September 28th and October 5th of 2018."
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Well, I'll just wait until the plans are circulated, okay?
Thank you. You wanna bring that up? Just to your right?
All right. Great. Good evening. Good evening. For the record, my name is Rich Cirky, and to my right is Kevin Grady, and together we represent David Mulcahy, who is sitting behind us, who is the applicant before you tonight. Mr. Mulcahy is seeking to construct an addition to the rear of a pre-existing non-conforming residence that's located on the subject premises, and he wishes to utilize that addition for equipment storage for his deer, tick, and mosquito control business, and for the manufacture and retail sale of bat boxes, Guinea fowl coops, and other tick and mosquito-averse projects, products, and for associated office space. On August 29th, to introduce this project, I wrote to Mr. Cole as follows. I said, "The property is in the highway commercial zone. You all know where it is. It's near the Plimpton Town Line on Route 58. Notwithstanding the fact that it's in the highway commercial zone, however, there is a residence on the property that was constructed in 1965, and the continued use of the residence for residential purposes is a pre-existing non-conforming use. The proposed purchaser of the property, Mr. Mulcahy, who is the applicant before you, wants to add an extension onto the back of the residence for his craftsman/tradesman shop. The use of the proposed extension as a craftsman/tradesman shop is an allowed use in the HC Zone," and I'll get into that in a minute more deeply. "There's a tenant who currently occupies the existing residence under a lease. It's the intention of Mr. Mulcahy, however, to convert the residence ultimately into his office when he's financially able to do so, at which point, of course, the entire structure will be used for allowed purposes, craftsman/tradesman in the HC Zone, and any further residential use of the former residence will be prohibited." Now, with that as an introduction, and before I turn the microphone over to Mr. Grady with your permission, I wanna talk a little bit further, as I said I would, about the definition of craftsman/tradesman. The definition of craftsman/tradesman from the... The definition of craftsman/tradesman from the zoning bylaw says, "Craftsman/tradesman shall mean retail and/or service provided by a worker who practices a trade or handicraft, comma, one who creates or performs with skill or dexterity, especially in the manual arts such as a jeweler, cabinet maker, frame person, et cetera." Now, in the section below the language I just read, I repeated that definition but laid it out in a way that I think makes it more understandable, because you have two terms here, craftsmen and tradesmen. And the definition is a combination definition, and I submit to you that it has two parts, one for craftsman and one for tradesman. It begins, "Craftsman/tradesman shall be, shall mean retail and/or service provided by a worker who practices a trade," and that is what we submit Mr. Mulcahy practices, "or a handicraft, comma, one who creates or performs with skill or dexterity, especially in the manual arts such as a jeweler, cabinet maker, frame person, et cetera." I submit to you that in order to be a craftsman/tradesman, you don't have to be both. You can be either. In our case, the applicant is a tradesman. He makes no claim to be a craftsman. The definition does not require that a product be created if you're a tradesman and not a craftsman. The definition doesn't require that the person perform with skill or dexterity within the proposed facility if you're a tradesman and not a craftsman. Black's Law Dictionary defines tradesman as, quote, "A mechanic of any kind whose livelihood depends on the labor of his hands." And this is the way tradesman, in my opinion, has been historically interpreted in Carver, when you think about tradesmen's shops, whether it's on Commerce Way or in other places throughout the town. Mr. Mulcahy, who wishes to house his equipment for his deer, tick, and mosquito control business on this property, and who wishes to manufacture and sell bat boxes, Guinea fowl coops, and other tick and mosquito-averse products, and use the balance of it for associated office space, would be using his property as a tradesman. And for that reason, I think we can get beyond easily enough the issue of whether or not his use is allowed under the zoning bylaw, because craftsman/tradesman is allowed in the HC Zone. With that, I'd like to turn it over, if you would allow me, to Mr. Grady, who's going to describe the particulars of the...
Thank you, Attorney Cirky, Kevin Grady, Grady Consulting. We submitted an application and a site plan for site plan review in conformance with your requirements. The site plan details conformance with Planning Board rules, regulations, requirements, as well as other state requirements like stormwater, et cetera. The site plan submitted is nine sheets. The cover sheet details conformance with zoning. The second sheet is an existing conditions, showing sheet what's existing there currently, setbacks to wetlands, existing building setbacks, et cetera. Third sheet is the overall layout, pavement widths, number of parking spaces. Fourth sheet is details drainage, drainage swales, infiltration basins, et cetera. Then we have a few sheets of details. Sheet eight details conformance of landscape requirements and includes photometric plan. It also shows fire turning and access. And actually, the ninth sheet is the photometric plan. The eighth sheet just has plan details. The site's an existing single-family dwelling. It has two access points. The applicant would like to keep the access points the way they are for circulation. They've provided means of access to this property for years. We are proposing to widen the entrance on the north side in response to comments from the fire department, which I can get into as we go forward here. So the site is required to have 60,000 square feet. This lot here has 66,000 square feet, conforms there. The frontage is required to have 250 feet. We have 222 on the existing lot. The proposed driveways accessing the parking area and the garage are 24 feet in width, or the main one on the north. The one on the south, that's going to be more of a residential auto access. It's not really intended for the proposed truck vehicles that are going to be stored in the garage. We are proposing 19 parking spaces, 13 of them on the exterior, six interior, currently has six trucks, and he, there's sufficient space inside the building to store them inside the building. Each space is 18 by 10. It is not anticipating having a lot, having a lot of automobile parking needs here. As I said, he has six trucks, so we may have six cars parked there, and then the trucks will exit for the day and come back. The site is serviced by an existing septic system that was just upgraded. It's located underneath the main access drive. It was approved by the Board of Health within the last year or so. We are proposing to have gas, gas is, there's an existing gas service. He's going to reuse the gas service. There's an existing water service. He wants to reuse that water service, so there's utilities. We did do an overall stormwater analysis for the project and the site. The existing condition, the, basically, the water runs from the Cape Cod Burn on North Main Street, and it runs in a easterly direction to the wetland in the rear. The post-development scenario, a portion of the pre-developed site runs off-site without any stormwater controls. The proposed pavement, 100% of that, and the building are collected by the stormwater management system. The drainage system is basically a, it's a cross-country drainage system where the stormwater runs across the parking lot and enters a drainage swale on the north side of the lot. At the end of the swale, there's a sediment for bay that provides TSS removal before reaching the infiltration basin to the rear of the parking lot. There is an outlet control structure that controls the rate of runoff from that infiltration basin, and that rate of runoff is controlled, so it doesn't increase the rate of runoff beyond that of the pre-development scenario. So we're not increasing runoff from this site as it relates to rate, rate of runoff. We are proposing handicap-accessible space in the front of the building. It's to the left of the existing building. There's a walkway proposed along that edge of the building, and that is handicap, that's the handicap-accessible route where we access the office portion. So I don't believe the applicant has a lot of foot traffic for this use. I think it's mostly internet and phone call. However, if there is a, somebody driving by that needs to access, there will be accessibility for that. We have proposed a dumpster. We've relocated that from our first version of the plans. Initially, we wanted it on the right of the building, lined up with the south entrance. The review engineers requested that we consider relocating that to the rear of the building so that it's further from view from North Main Street, so we located all the way to the back of the parking lot. It's got direct access from a front loader, trash truck. The building is a slab foundation where he's going to be housing trucks, materials, equipment. Commercial garage uses require a floor drain system. This floor drain system goes to a wastewater holding tank that is a dual-wall tank with alarms within it, so when water or spills or any liquids reach the slab inside the building, it goes to the drain, floor drain, and then goes to this holding tank. The holding tank is alarmed for when it's full, or it's alarmed for when the initial containment tank has a breach. It has nodes in there that will alarm when they're, when it's submerged in liquid. So any spills, any issues with contamination from vehicles dripping oil, gas, which are standard commercial issues in a garage, these will go to the floor drain system, and they stay contained in this tank. That tank gets pumped out by a licensed taller and disposed of in a proper facility. We submitted landscape plans designed by a professional landscape architect detailing how the entire site will be landscaped, and it will be aesthetically pleasing to the owner and to the abutters and people driving by on North Main Street. We provided a lighting plan detailing how we're not going to be casting light onto abutting properties or to the night sky. They're all night sky compliant. The applicant has asked us to do a comprehensive plan, site plan detailing all these items. He believes he has a good, sustainable use here, so he's asked us to cover all these specific items. The last page, we are showing turning radiuses for the fire trucks. The site is very accessible with the new curb radii and pretty straight entrance for access to the building. I did do, I did prepare responses to three letters that we've received. One from Fussin' O'Neill a few weeks ago, one from the fire department a few weeks ago, and one from Fussin' O'Neill on Friday. I can go through each one. It's three pages long, but I think we can get into each one of those specifically if the board wants to. One of the items that comes up, came up regularly was storage of pesticides, insecticides. They're proposed to be stored indoors, not exposed to the elements, and again, there's a floor drain system with a double containment tank that will be pumped in the event that there's, there's an issue with that. The applicant has submitted some data sheets detailing how the product that he uses is, it's not a, it's technically an insecticide, because it does kill insects. However, it's a minimum risk. And I've detailed in here the exemption it has from FI-FRA 25B, because it's, it's basically essential oils of products you probably have in your house today, so it's, it's low risk. It's not round-up or anything toxic like that. However, it will be stored inside the building and not exposed to elements and abutters, animals, et cetera. So it will be contained. Anything else? With that, we'd be happy to take questions from the board.
Okay, before we do that, do you have anything to add, Stephen? And then I'll go on to Sean, just to kind of round up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We did receive the application and conducted a TRC on September 10th. We received some comments back from the fire department that same day. Subsequent comments were also shared by Fussin' O'Neill from a zoning perspective, and then as recently as the fifth, we were able to conclude with Fussin' O'Neill, the review of the remaining elements. Contained in your packet, you have copies of the fire department's memo detailing four particular areas of concern, and also contained is the original Fuss memo from September 11th and the updated one from October 5th. Sean, as you mentioned, is here, so I don't want to speak for Fussin' O'Neill, but highlighting particular areas of concern shared by the fire department, where of course, the roadway, the roadway radius, the driveway width, and more particularly, the fire protection. Quoting now from Jesse Boyle, Assistant Deputy Fire Chief, "An NFPA-compliant sprinkler system is required if the aggregate of the buildings exceeds 7,500 square feet." The submitted plan indicates that the footprint of the proposed structure will be 7,336 square feet. No floor plans have been submitted at the time of the memo, although if second-floor space in addition, in the addition exists to a significant degree, and 7,500 square feet is exceeded, a sprinkler system shall be installed.
Good to see you, Sean. Haven't seen you for a while. What do you have to add?
There were three, three items that were a primary concern to me. One was applicant's engineer kind of discussed some of the containment, the storage containment tank, the UST that's located in the parking lot. One was the emergency response plan. That's a requirement of the application. I didn't see it in the package that I had received, and I don't know if there was one provided in the response that I'd received tonight, in addition to the material information that was being provided as well. So that's something that should be looked at, whether it's a toxic substance or not, I don't know. I don't have, I didn't have the original materials, so it's something that we'd have to take a quick look at, see how the emergency response plan should be applied. The other was regarding the fire department, there was a question about whether the fire department's access would be adequate, and I suggest that the fire department at least weigh in and consider whether the turning movements that are provided on the drawings was adequate. I know they'd conducted a review already, but this was specific to how the fire truck would, would enter the site and then back up and exit. And then I had a couple more regarding the outdoor storage of any materials. Applicant's engineer described all the materials that could be exposed to precipitation would be stored inside the building, so that would be not a concern. I think in the emergency response plan and the handling of these materials, how, how would greater spills be dealt with? What are the size of the containers that are being stored? If a spill does occur and it flows outside, it could get into the drainage system, so... I mean, there are other protection measures that you could incorporate into the design. You could line the basin, but that would prohibit infiltration of stormwater, so that's a negative. So I think weighing the potential for spills and how they would be managed or captured and that sort of thing should be addressed by the applicant. Perhaps that's addressed with the floor drains and how the floor is actually designed and pitched. A spill could be self-contained in the building, and that would, you know, alleviate that concern. It would actually go into the stor, the holding tank. The other was, I've noticed quickly in the response letter, I didn't get to review it in any detail, but whether the stormwater regulations from the Board of Health are applicable to this project as a redevelopment project. There is significant amount of new development activity that's happening on the property, so I...
So I think it's up to the board to decide and I'm sure discuss with Mr. Cirky whether the Board of Health regulations apply to this particular project. Now, if you go to the zoning site plan review, it directs you to the subdivision regulations, which is in turn refers an applicant to the Board of Health regulations. So on my mind, the regulations would apply. It doesn't, doesn't say that you go through an applicability standard necessarily. So that's something to discuss. Another reason I bring it up is that the rainfall depths used in the model are not as great as the town requires. The town requires nine inches for 100-year storm, 9.04, and the applicant used seven. So that would affect the sizing of the stormwater system. And a lot of the other things that were discussed about ADA accessibility and some minor site, I didn't have any major site development issues. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have, but, you know, I have some follow-ups on the ADA access and things like that, but nothing of significance.
Okay, thank you, Sean. So we have less frontage than, than is normally needed, so that requires variance? Does that, how does that work?
Nothing that we're proposing to do is going to increase that non-conformity. I mean, there's a, a structure on the property now, and I cannot believe that by adding to it...
Actually, I misspoke, actually. The, he will have more frontage than is required. He's also purchasing the lots to the right that comes along with this, but there's no proposed development associated with that. So I don't have the total...
(inaudible).
Yeah, it's, it's well over the required amount, I believe. Probably another 300, 150 feet here and probably another 150-foot lot.
So those lots will be adjoined?
They're getting sold to this owner.
I also noticed, and I'm just asking this question, I'm not sure myself, but I see that it looks like the retention basin's within the 100-foot buffer. I mean, I know this isn't Concom, we're not Concom, but I was just wondering, is that, is that going to be a problem?
We've met with the commission and they've issued an order of conditions.
Okay. What size is the holding tank? And you said that there are two tanks involved, there's like a spill over tank?
There's just a single, there's a single tank. I believe it's 1,500 gallons. We're not anticipating a lot of water usage or spillage. There's not a lot of vehicles. It doesn't have a washing bay or anything like that. These, these types of tanks don't typically fill up very quickly because there's a cost associated with that. So we have, yeah, it's a 15, what's on? Just want to make sure I'm giving you the right, I think it's a 1,500-gallon tank inside a 2,000-gallon tank.
The exterior, I believe I read was 1,500.
Actually, we proposed a 1,000-gallon inside a 2,000. It's a, it's a plastic Roth RMT 106O plastic tank. We specified this one for similar uses. It's, it's, it's almost on the shelf in Pembroke Concrete or through Cape Wind Waterworks. We've worked with them to come up with a system for this use, this type of use. So we've been specifying these tanks pretty regularly.
Do you, Mr. Chair? On page three, the tank that says proposed is 1,500 gallons, holding tank. Is, is that the same tank that we're talking about?
Yeah, it is. I'm looking at a smaller... I'll have to check on that, but the, the outside tank is 2,000, but then the spec we have is the RMT 106O. Typically, that's gallonage. I would have to check to, to make sure that they align.
Yeah, we're just...
Our intent was, I, I think it's a 1,500, but where the spec says 106O, that leads me to think it's a 1,000-gallon tank. I just have to check that.
Now, we have a, a letter from the Fire Department. Has all those, their concerns been addressed or still working with the Fire Department?
We're still working with the Fire Department. We provided a response to their letter today. We were hoping to do a singular response to all instead of one response to Fire Department and a nine-set, a nine-sheet set revision in a letter. We thought we would be able to do this in advance of the meeting, which we were, but by a couple hours. Yep. So a couple of the items that was brought up by the Fire Department. One, they asked for radiuses at the entrance. They asked for 40-foot radiuses. I proposed 30-foot radiuses here. 40s are humongous. That's, that's a lot of pavement for that movement. State highway access permits typically require a max and a min of 30-foot radius all over the state, and those are accessible for fire trucks in every other town. I did run a auto turn on this and showed it on sheet nine. There's more than enough room to make any turn coming in and out of that north entrance in particular.
That's all the questions that I have. Anybody on the, on the board have, oh, Sean, have you had time to really fully review this plan and the drainage and everything? Have you looked at it thoroughly?
Yes, we looked at it. Yes, we looked at it in detail. It's, I haven't reviewed the response to comments in any detail yet, but... Yep.
All right, anybody else on the board have any questions or comments?
Could I just comment a little further on the, on the Fire Department memo? They did ask that we have 24-foot wide aisles. We provided that. I believe they were 24 feet to begin with. One of the items they asked for as well was accessing all three sides of the building. There's a few reasons we don't want to do that. One, obviously, is cost. It's, you know, it's an additional expense to build a driveway to nowhere for a, you know, for the, for a potential fire. Secondly, is environmental issues. We did have to go through permitting with the Conservation Commission. That side of the building is closest to the wetlands resource area. So we're trying to minimize impacts to the wood, the woodland there. The other thing here is that this existing driveway here has access to a garage, a rear garage entrance here. In an extreme emergency where the Fire Department needed to reach this back, they could pull into this location and have access to a good portion of the back. It's not a perfect 24-foot wide aisle. That is this. That's their main access for, you know, a heart attack, you know, any, anything. A full conflagration here, they're not going to be able to drive around the building. So we would like to request from the Fire Department that we don't pave the entire way around the building.
Okay, so that's something you'll have to discuss with the Fire Department and come to some sort of a compromise or... We generally follow the, what the Fire Department recommends, so we'll, you'll have, we'll have to look at that. All right, anybody else have any questions or comments?
Well, question, you had said that you weren't using toxic stuff like Roundup and you were using essential oils. So what, what are the products?
David Mulkey, the applicant, probably best to answer this.
Yeah?
Yeah, I'll move my, okay, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you.
So the Essentria IC3 is our ticking mosquito product. It's essential oil extracts. It is FIFR B25. Peppermint, rosemary, stuff that you can pretty much pull off the shelf. And then the Deer Clear is our deer control product, and that's food-based. Once again, stuff you can buy at Costco.
On the Essentria, when it says other ingredients, 83%, is that water? Because on the Deer Clear, it says water, 63.9%. So is that other, the 83%?
It's all inert ingredients that the manufacturer puts in that, from what we understand, there's no issues.
Okay. Yeah, the other one just specifies a ton of water, so I was...
Yeah, different manufacturer.
Did other mean water?
Well, that 83, see in the parentheses? See the list?
Okay, sure.
Yeah, that's what's in there, yeah.
For the record, that unidentified voice, I think was that of Mr. Ardianno.
Are you currently operating out of Carver or would you be a new business coming into town?
New business coming in.
I had a couple of quick questions on, is there going to be retail as well? I know you said not many people would stop by, but is it intended true?
No. Goal is no. We will, you have the Guinea hen coops and the bat boxes, but the goal is no, we'll install those to our current clients.
Okay, so then a business hours you're... I know in the thing that we saw here, it said like 7:00 to 8:00 AM, will most of the vehicles be going in, in and out? Just, is there a closing time that...
Typically, 5 o'clock is when we're done.
So the same, though?
Yep.
It goes that, bring the trucks back and then they'll be driving out?
Correct.
Okay. And were there any, I know we don't, hadn't seen anything yet, but signs as far as...
Not been proposed at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
So what are you going to do with these chemicals? Do you have a crew or do you go out and spray yards with these chemicals?
Yep, so the essential oils get mixed into water, and we spray residential and commercial properties for ticking mosquito control and deer control.
Now, that is a requirement through the Agricultural Department that you have to be licensed, right?
So this product, you do not have to be licensed. I do have my license.
And so you do not have to be licensed in order to apply these chemicals?
The FIFR B25, no, you do not need to, exempt.
And I have another question. Maybe you guys already addressed it, but, so what is actually going on with the pre-existing non-conforming use of the single-family dwelling?
My understanding is that it's going to remain leased to the, to the current tenant, and then at some point, it will be converted into an office and the residential use will cease. And so the non-conforming use will lapse. It's a matter of when financial considerations allow that transition to be made.
Kyra, do you have any questions?
Actually, I do. I'm pretty familiar with the material safety data sheets and pesticide labels, and I know this is pretty benign, but I'm noticing down here, it says for chemical spill, leak, or fire, you call Chemtrick. Do you have anything from Chemtrick or is that where you got your idea to do the storage holding tank in case you have a spill?
I do not have anything from Chemtrick.
Okay, but that's something to look into, because even if it's benign and it's an oil, it can still be flammable and...
I think on the fourth page, it says to clean, for cleanup.
Yeah, to call, to call, okay.
It said if there's a spill...
Okay, to call Chemtrick, a number.
Yeah, one more page over.
Okay.
There is another paragraph...
Okay.
...that states how to clean up, which does include...
Okay, okay. You still want to address the flammability of it? You know, just things heating up with heat in a building? You know, it can, some of it you'll lose, it'll dissipate, but you don't want it to combust either.
Correct.
So I think I'd just look into what Chemtrick says to do for that and maybe include that in your plan.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Will, do you have anything?
I do. So, Mr. Chair, through you, can we talk a little bit about the water flow? Said it's going to go flow back towards the wetlands. Can you show me where that's happening?
Stormwater.
Yep.
So there's a high point. There's basically a divide line approximately here... Mm-hmm. ...on the property. Everything this way heads, heads back to the, to the wetlands through the woods, hundreds, hundreds of feet through woodland before it gets to the wetlands, so it's well-treated. In this direction, it runs across the parking lot to the swale here and back through here. There's a high point here, so some of it may, may do this. But essentially, it goes to this low point in the back right corner of the parking lot. Through this swale is a sediment for bay sized in this location here. It goes through a check dam, so sediment falls out of the drainage system at this location. In here, we get... Volume attenuation and a little bit of infiltration. Basically, then there's a outlet control structure here and an outlet erosion control sediment pad right here. So this discharge is 65 feet away from the resource area, and stormwater will be outletted at this location and go through the woods to the, to the wildland.
It always eventually goes to the wildland.
Yeah. Well, my concern is the use. Question, I don't know if you can answer it or not. Did you look at this considering the water resource area for the North Carver Water District?
I didn't.
Okay.
Everything's indoors. Everything we're storing is going to be interior.
Looking for the worst-case scenario. Sean, can we make sure that we look at that?
Yeah, I guess that's, that's kind of the question about just the handling of the materials. They're not inherently toxic if used correctly, but that's, that's true with a lot of substances. And, you know, during shipping, delivery, those, those are the types of instances where spillages occur. And vehicle washing, I think we talked about it earlier, that would be a prohibited activity.
Yeah.
I was, the other question I had, we can discuss it now too, but just looking through quickly, one of the things as far as getting rid of the containers, you rinse them out and then dump them, and then you can recycle the container, not reuse it. Presumably, but we'd have to kind of be sure, is that the, the containers are rinsed into the storage tank if they're going to be reused, or maybe they're going to be disposed of in the trash. It's, we don't know yet. My concern is these types of materials, if they get into the septic system, can cause problems. The oils and peppermint certainly is another ingredient that doesn't do well with septic systems. So that's kind of one of my follow-up questions and thoughts. So that's kind of one of my follow-up questions and thoughts.
I think in the emergency response plan, just those types of things can be spelled out. Just spill kit, I mean, speedy dry was basically the material that was described here on the data sheet and what the applicant's engineer said, so I think I'd like a little bit, to think about that a little bit more and see the plan and... But we did consider it, certainly if there's going to be a spill, you know, the drainage system flows towards the infiltration basin, so you've kind of got, you've got another opportunity, once it reaches the pavement, to not only stop it from spreading, but before it gets to the wetland or the water supply. You know, the response plan would indicate what else you do after that. If the material gets into the soil, do you remove the soil and those sorts of things, and transport it off-site for disposal?
Okay. It was just a question. We're just saying it for the first time.
If I could just respond to that real quickly, too, and this was highlighted by Fasen O'Neill's letter, section 4300, that the storage of pesticides and insecticides is not a prohibited use in that district. So it's not prohibited. The applicant is making provisions to protect the environment by storing it inside, and he's also providing an interior floor drain system. They mix this, they load the trucks, they do everything on the inside of the building. So there are provisions and considerations for the environment here. And it's not, and again, it's not a prohibited activity.
Mr. Chair, I would just add, those are all great best management practices, you know, and again, I think just a little bit of clarification on some of those handling processes, that they're all transferred inside. The one exception would be with the pumping of the holding tank, obviously, that's something that's going to happen, it has to happen, so it gets pumped. It would be interesting to note whether that floor drain system is done in a way so that if there were spills, catastrophic spill for whatever reason, it would go into the drain system and be contained in the underground storage tank. Certainly, storing the materials inside is a best management practice.
Yeah.
Avoiding exposure. So I think just needs a little bit more detail on the... The information that's being provided tonight is very helpful.
Yep.
But just to be clear, that these are all, these are all good things that should be done anyway, but documenting them, I think for the application would be justified.
Typically, the floor drain system is pitched to the middle of the facility. It'd have to be a lot of water to fill beyond that and then get out over the apron and out into the parking lot. I believe it's 50-gallon drums, is that what we're using? 55-gallon drums. All of them would have to, I don't know, how many do you, how many do you think you would have? It would have to be something out of the ordinary that you probably couldn't plan for if this was to wind up in the drainage system somehow. So in the normal practice, everyday routine, it would be unlikely for these drums to wind up outside of the building and spilled.
Thank you for that information. So just a couple of things, and then I'm going to ask the prudent question at the end of this. We talked about the water resource area briefly. Drainage flows, we talked about that a little bit. Storage of the materials, you provide us with some type of information for the type of materials that are going to be there. That'd be good reading for us and to look into, to make sure that that's in. The sprinkler system per fire departments is still unclear to me. The storage of...
Can I address that for you?
I want to go through my things. We're going to see, again, I'm not going to approve it tonight. I won't, they can, I won't. Storage of containments, emergency response plan, the material specification, fire department access, is it adequate enough or not? The stormwater regulations, whether or not it's required for the Board of Health on this type of application. More clearer on the tank size, whether it's 1,000 or 1,500 gallon on that. All that says to me, you've applied for a site plan review, why not a special permit? Everything that I'm looking at right now is saying special permit.
Is that a zoning permit here?
According to the stormwater resource area and the type of the product that you're going to have here dictates a special permit.
Under what, is, from the planning board, or under what section are we?
Under blah, 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 blah. Where did I write it down? 4300...
60.
4360, I think. Just asking the question. We can argue it until we're blue in the face, I just want to make sure that we're following the proper procedures. I want to get it up front. Also want to make sure that this change of use of, from a residence and then someday down the road to a, to the office, how that's going to be dictated in the language. I don't know how you would do that, Rich.
I would, what I have in mind is that at some point, the residential use will cease, which is non-conforming, and the office use, in connection with the business use I've described, will commence. And at that point, we can document it for purposes of zoning, that the non-conforming use has lapsed.
Okay. That's a legal...
Yeah.
I'm no legal guy. I just don't know how well...
And I would envision that when the residential use ends, that we would file something that indicates that we're abandoning it, so that we wouldn't have to wait the two-year period to determine whether or not it can possibly be recommenced.
That'd be something to talk about during this process. So those are just a couple of things that I had, Mr. Chair, while we've been going through this. Oh. Are you in front of the ZBA for a change or anything? Any type of variances?
We have a petition before the ZBA for a variance to the extent necessary. And I say to the extent necessary, because I don't believe we need one.
Okay.
For the reasons that I just explained. But in order to not stand on ceremony, we have applied for it. But when we go before them, I intend to tell them the same thing that I told you here tonight, and that is that I don't believe I need a variance for use. Because I'm well within the craftsman slash tradesman definition, as it's written and as it's been historically interpreted in the town.
Okay.
And applied in the town.
Thanks, Rich. And you said you already went to Concom, I'm sorry?
Yes.
You already went to Concom, you have that decisions done?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I got for now.
Okay. Any other questions by any of the board members? All right, open this up to the public. Is there anyone here that would like to ask any, have any questions or concerns? Seeing no one coming forward. I think we should schedule a site visit.
Before we do that, do you have any time restraints on this project? Winter is coming.
This is the unidentified voice I referred to.
We know it well.
Buzz Artianno, current owner of the property.
Welcome, Buzz.
Longtime Carver resident. Good evening, everyone. Currently live in Kingston, I own Commerce Way, comprise the seven buildings there in North Carver. The property was purchased by myself to be rehabilitated and then sold. I met David because he is my tech guy. He applies tech. So we got talking, and he wanted to expand his business, it's been growing, and he needed a place to house his business. We started talking about the project, and we've made a contract agreement for him to purchase it, obviously subject to permits, which is very common. So in my opinion, this has gone on a long time. I understand from the board, it's the first time you've seen it. To me, this is a pretty simple project. I understand the rules and regulations, as you know, well, some of you probably know, I sat on a lot of times on that side of the table when I was a resident in this town, and sat on signed permit, bylaw, Carver Water District, you name it. I sat on a lot of boards, so I get it. If we'd like to do a site work, I think it would be a good idea. So you can see that this is a very minor project in a highway commercial zone directly across from Tractor Supply. To me, it's a pretty simple project. I understand the environmental concerns, and we're going to address those with a response plan and the other issues, but I would like to impress on the board that this is what I would consider a pretty minor project in a commercial zone on a commercial highway across from commercial space. So to answer your question directly, no, there are no time constraints, we'd like to get this approved. His plan is to build the building next year, and then occupy the space, and then as his finances allow, you know, he's a small business, and he needs the income from the rental property in interim until he grows his business large enough that he can vacate the house and take that over for his office space. So it's nothing different than I did when I started out my business. You know, I started in the basement of my house and worked out from there. So this is, we've been very transparent from day one what our intentions were, and we haven't tried to say anything other than what we'd like to do. So if we'd like to schedule a site walk, I think that'd be good, so that everybody can see the existing conditions and understand the project.
That'd be awesome. Thanks, Buzz. I knew we'd get you back in here.
So obviously, we want this site walk before the next planning board meeting, which would be, today's the 9th, the next one would be the 23rd.
Just say, for everybody's information, I am out of town on the 23rd, but we have plenty of members of the board to continue.
So I would, but you still like to go on the site walk?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
And I'd like to still participate, I just know that I'm out of town on the 23rd.
What's a good day for everybody?
We can avoid Mondays, that's always best for me.
How about National Bosses' Day, which is the 16th?
I have a commitment at 6:00.
Or we could do, actually, Wednesday would be the 17th.
Yeah, Wednesday's okay with me.
You have something at 6? Could we do, could we do it at 5? Would that... Oh, 5, okay. How about Thursday? The 18th. Would that be good for you, Jen?
I think so.
At the moment, I'm okay with the 18th.
Okay, so it's just...
Just have to double-check it.
Checking Will.
Yeah, we'd have to do it early, I think I can pull that off. Where are we?
Can I have you break it up? If you'd like, we could do sidewalks, it's a small sidewalk, it's not going to take long. You need like a few on Monday, a few on...
Sweet, thank you, Buzz. Make a motion to set the site walk for October 18th at 5:00.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we'll do the site walk at 157 North Main Street at 5:00 on the 18th.
Anything that you'd like staked out?
Probably do the corners of the, now, is this going to be the building? Okay, if we could have the corners of the building staked out? Or at least the five corners, anyway.
Yeah. Corner of the pavement?
And probably the corners of the pavement, off to the left side of the building where you have the proposed parking spaces. I don't know if, maybe the four corners of the two entrance ways?
They exist now.
Oh, they exist, okay. You want what?
We don't need, do we need a center line with the fire department looking for радиус?
Well, well, that, I guess that... This is just going to be roughly just looking at the site, and then, you know, what the fine details that are worked out later on. We'll see that on a plan, but at least if we go for a site walk, we can kind of get an idea of what's out there. Anything else anybody wants to see? Yeah, I think, I think that'll work. Yeah, the drainage basin will be off to the back of the parking lot. I don't know if we need to see that. It's more of a Concom issue, I think. So that would be good, if we could see those points. So we'll, oh, this is a public, oh, I already asked, nobody wanted to had any other comments. So we'll just continue this, have a, entertain a motion to continue the...
Question.
Yes.
And I'm going to go through you to the applicant. Do you want to, are you set forth on meeting on October 23rd, or would you like to meet at our next meeting? I am out of town. We have plenty of the board to be here.
Let's leave it for the 23rd.
You got it.
And we can always change that if we have to.
Okay, I make a motion to continue the hearing for October 23rd at 7:00.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have a public hearing on renewable energy. We have a public hearing notice, in accordance with the provisions of the Town of Carver zoning bylaw, the Carver Planning Board will hold a public hearing on October 9th, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. in the Carver Town Hall, Meeting Room 1, on the application of Renewable Energy Development Partner LLC requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to sections 3100, 3580, and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at 13-A Gate Street and 0 Godfrey Circle, Carver, Mass., which is on Assessors Maps 37, Lot 1-L-R and 1-0-R to allow a large-scale ground-mounted dual-use solar power generating project in a residential slash agricultural district. Any persons interested and wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the plan is filed at the Planning Department and may be reviewed during normal business hours. Carver Planning Board, Bruce Mackey, Chair, Carver Reporter, published dates, September 28th and October 5th of 2018. So good evening.
Good evening, sir. Floor mine?
Yes, it is, yeah, go ahead. Give us your name and...
Sure. Good evening, folks, I am, my name's Hank Wmet. I'm one of the principals of Renewable Energy Development... Energy Development Partners, we're the applicant for this project. Behind me here today is Peter Beaton with Bayside Agricultural, he's the landowner and the current grower, and his colleague Ian Ward. My firm has been working with Peter and Ian here for four-plus years now, we've got a couple operating solar projects in Plymouth, we're evaluating a few other projects in the area, and my firm has, we've been, my partner and I are both Massachusetts guys, I'm a Matapoiset native, we've been working in the solar industry en masse for about eight years now, and prior to that, both of us have an engineering background here in the state. So the project before you tonight, we're here for a site plan review and a special permit application for a, what's known as a dual-use solar project. So this is the, a solar project that you're all familiar with in one regard, it's a, it's an array of solar panels planted into the ground, but it's going to be designed and operated such that there will be active agricultural use under the solar array. A little bit of context to start, so the site, and if anyone needs me to spin this, just give me a holler, the site is off of Gate Street, here's Gate Street here, it's about 170 acres or so of agricultural land, about 30 of which I think are cranberry bogs, if I'm not mistaken, cranberry bogs you can see here. Peter actively farms the bogs. To the east of the bogs, this is Punishment Street down here, just for orientation. So to the east of the bogs is a approximately 13-acre gravel pit that's bifurcated right by a transmission line that runs right down through the middle of it. So essentially, you've got a, part of the proposed project is to the west of the transmission line and the other part is to the east of the transmission line. I'll talk about the eastern and western phases of the project throughout the night just for convenience. So, the gravel pit to the west is mostly spent at this point, Peter has mined out the sands and gravels over the years and there's really not much more productive use to that chunk of land. And then Peter intends to mine, some of the, some of the land to the east of the array has been mined for sand and gravel and he intends to mine the balance of it for his onsite use. As you know, cranberry farming requires lots of sand. So at the end of that mining process, Peter's going to have about 13 acres of generally not very valuable land. We had originally proposed, when we're evaluating all his properties, to do a traditional solar project there. And during our discussions and evaluation of that, the state rolled out its new incentive program for solar. And part of that incentive program is to support these dual-use projects wherein the land under the solar project just doesn't turn into a hayfield or just, you know, a grassy area that is no longer productive, but rather, the solar project is designed so that agricultural activities can flourish under the solar panels. The net result of that is that the solar array itself is taller than a traditional array. In this case, the lower edge of the panels will be eight feet off the ground, so the lowest point of the solar array will be about eight feet off the ground, and the top, the back edge of the panels will be about 15 feet in the air. So that's the, and I've got some, there's some cross-sections in the plans so you can see what they look like. The other chief difference in this design compared to a traditional solar array is that the rows of panels will be spaced much further apart than a traditional array. And the reason for that is twofold. One is by design or by intention, we need to make sure that there's enough sunlight that gets to the ground in the footprint within the array to support agriculture. And the other reason is, we need to make sure that there's a clear drive alley between all the rows for farming equipment. So the gap in our design is about 25 feet from the back edge of one panel to the front edge of the next, which is probably about twice as wide as it would typically be. So this project is about 2.8 megawatts in capacity, if it was a traditional solar array, it would probably be closer to four megawatts. So that's the chief distinction in the, in the design differences that we're making to accommodate agricultural is it's further apart, basically. That's big picture of the project. Peter is a, you know, been in the cranberry growing business for a long time with his family. This project presents an opportunity for Peter to diversify, frankly, the farming income stream and diversify his farming operations. So this isn't, right now, the land is fallow and would be fallow. At the end, the net result of this project would be the creation, really, of agricultural land. We're going to be taking some materials that are onsite, some organic materials, and spreading them after we regrade this area to create a farming base. So we're creating new agricultural land that will continue to be used and at the same time will be generating renewable electricity from the footprint. So we're, you know, as solar developers, we're excited about the project. We've teamed with Peter before, we think we have a good partnership and we're certainly confident in our joint ability to make this project work, both from a solar standpoint and from an agricultural standpoint. We're in a parallel approval process with the state right now, the state's new solar program is in the red zone, but not in the end zone yet, it's just about to launch, should be launching any day. We've filed for approval with the state to do, they have a, they have a mechanism to allow projects such as these, so we have filed for that approval and are expecting it to be approved shortly. We've also filed with the local utility for interconnection as, you know, typical for a solar project. So we're, we're pretty far along, but we're also amenable to feedback from the town and from stakeholders to changes to the project if, if there are impacts that we have not anticipated or just have over, you know, through oversight. So, I will, you know, we're here, we're here both for a special permit review or a site plan review and a special permit. We prepared an application that I think addresses all of the requirements in your bylaw, we made an effort to call out all the things that said thou shalt do this, that, or the other thing, and we've addressed them. We don't, we believe we're fully compliant with all the requirements of the bylaw, we're not asking for any relief or waivers. I will walk through briefly what we think are the key issues, the same issues that we walked through with the review committee a week and a half ago or so. And then I'm happy to entertain questions after that, if that makes sense to the board.
Steven, do you have anything to add?
Yes, first, to apologize to the applicant, because I got your voicemail earlier today, Hank, and frankly, I didn't know it was you, because you didn't tell me it was you.
Well, okay.
My apologies. Mr. Chair, we did conduct a technical review, and frankly, it was, it was probably one of the more straightforward projects we had reviewed as a committee and a board. We had representatives from the Conservation Commission, DPW, the Building Commissioner was president, and of course Jesse Boyle, representing all facets, public safety. My comment here from the Concom is simply that they had reviewed and approved the plan as set forth on September 19th and an order of conditions was issued, so quoting here, they are all set with conservation. The standard things from fire department, of course, just making certain that we have sufficient access for vehicles and, oh, there was a gradient change, there was something that Jesse had caught in the plans, I think it had mistakenly said something like 15%, but it was supposed to be 10%. We corrected that and we caught that. But for that, it seems fairly straightforward. And also in front of you, we just received some commentary from Fussin O'Neil, and so I'll ask Sean to share with us his thoughts on that, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please, sure.
Yes, apologize to the applicant for getting it so late in the day, but it's basically a page, there's a, there's a number of very minor items on the, on the review memo. There's a few that I want to just point out to the board, one that they may or may not be interested in, perhaps the applicant's engineer can go through that and describe, you know, the specific areas where the crops will be managed, they're not, at least to me, they weren't clearly demarcated, you know, what area's going to be stabilized, where the stormwater management's going to occur, and, you know, what areas are actually going to be used for that agricultural activity. The other was the stormwater rainfall depths, again, this is actually the, probably one of three that didn't use the rainfall depth, so it's not an unusual occurrence, but again, the Carver rainfall depths were slightly higher than those used in the applicant's calculations. In addition, the, some of the model was a little bit on the less conservative side, but I will qualify that by saying that the applicant looked at what we'd call a worst-case scenario in the stormwater management report, and that's using crop, tilled crops below the array, so effectively having a more, a surface condition that would generate more runoff, and they sized and modeled their system accordingly. So they took a conservative approach from that respect, so that was good. But we like to see them update the model to use the Carver standards for rainfall depth. The last is, this is something the board might consider as a, as a condition of approval. The applicant's proposed to provide test pit data for the stormwater system prior to construction, but presumably after this proceeding. My suggestion is that the board, if it so chooses to approve the project, include a condition, that it be a condition of approval and administered through the administrative officer, something that can be reviewed, submitted and reviewed by the administrative officer afterwards. You know, one of the concerns, obviously, is that when soils are mined, we get closer and closer to the water table, just want to make sure that the basins are going to function properly in good soils and they're not going to be within the water table, so that's just the main concern. The applicant's proposing a lot of test pits, I don't know that they have to go to that extent, but certainly we can discuss that in more detail afterwards, come up with a plan that works for us and for the applicant. But those are my primary comments, the rest are quite minor.
Thank you, Sean. I see that, go start with the board, I guess, answering, asking questions, is all these solar panels going to be over existing bog?
None of them will be over existing bog, Mr. Chair. So just to be clear, the bogs are here. Right, this area is the existing sand pit, as well as here, it's hard, a little hard to see on this drawing, but the footprint of the solar is roughly what I'm tracing here. So there'll be some tree removal in the northern part of the eastern array and on the perimeter of the western array, but none of that is on cranberry bogs. So, yeah, this is, this is a dual-use project that involves farming below the panels, but not cranberry farming.
So you're actually going to have to construct cranberry bogs?
It's not going to be cranberry bogs, it's going to be, to enter, or to adjust, segue into one of the issues that your review engineer raised, we have proposed a farming plan to the state, because the state requires us to do so for this project. We didn't include it with the application to the board because we didn't think it was necessarily jurisdictional to this board. But to be clear, our farming plan, which we worked on and developed with Ian and Peter's input and consultation, is designed to be flexible. This is a 20-plus-year project. So we have a series, and we've hired a professional agronomist that we've been working with now for six months to help us identify suitable crops for the expected sunlight conditions. So we have a pretty comprehensive plan of agricultural row crops that we expect to grow, or to be able to grow and rotate, frankly, under the array, plus horticultural crops that we expect to, landscaping crops essentially, that do well in the shade. And then lastly, forage crops, mixes of legumes and grasses. At any one point in time over the next 20 years, some part of that footprint might be a hayfield, the other part of the footprint might be agricultural row crops, and a remaining component of the project might be windrows of landscaping plants. And those might change over time, and frankly, they will change over time. So, not only based on growing conditions, but market conditions. So there's a lot of the farming aspect of this project, but it's not, it's not cranberries and it's not a monoculture by design. The design is to vary the agricultural use of this site so that, you know, the owner of the land can diversify his revenue stream, frankly, and buffer some of the hard times in the cranberry business. To that point, as far as, you know, we made the, we brought up the comment at our design review meeting, we have, apparently we missed the rainfall depths, but we attempted to design the stormwater systems conservatively, assuming that the entire area below the array was agricultural row crops, because I think that's the worst case in terms of generating runoff. And so we've sized all the basins accordingly. And our intent would be to stabilize and seed the basins as shown and then plant everywhere else that we can. We're obviously looking to maximize planting area. In the event that, in some seasons, we choose to grow forage grasses, let's say we just take the whole eastern half of the array one year and we're growing hay, or a mix of hay and legumes, or grass and legumes. In that case, we'd probably like to expand the footprint of the hayfield to include the areas where the stormwater systems are and grow over them. We haven't exactly figured that out yet, we just wanted the flexibility to do so, because I think that what we've designed for stormwater management is probably going to be overkill for a significant part of the time. But we're, we're happy living with whatever condition or kind of checking in with the town staff and updating them on our plans, whatever the board feels necessary. That's, we're not to that level of detail in our design yet, so we, we thought it was just appropriate to go with a conservative design as a minimum, and then if we can demonstrate to you folks that it's not necessary for this coming season or for the next few seasons, then we can make that petition to staff and demonstrate it with some calculations. I should, by the way, apologize, we do have an engineer, Weston and Sampson, my Weston and Sampson engineer is unfortunately stuck on the road, a couple hours away, so, but we're happy to address any comments that require the input of an engineer.
So actually, a concern for this whole thing would be soil runoff going into the drainage system, filling up the basins or even the retention basins.
Sure, absolutely. And, you know, I guess one distinct differentiator between a typical solar project, which we built and owned several of them, so we, I don't know what happens, you know, once they get up and running, someone goes out there quarterly, maybe, to go check on them. This will be a completely different scenario, we'll be actively farming this, so we'll have earlier warning of erosion and runoff issues and the ability to remedy them, not quarterly, but it's going to be a problem for us as the, you know, as the agricultural I have some, I don't know what helps more, I know generally to the lay audience, existing conditions picture, but this is a, this is our engineering plan, and, you know, it shows where the, you know, the proposed stormwater basins are on the perimeter, the site has been a regrading plan to direct surface runoff to the perimeter where the basins will be. We've provided access roads to the north and south side of each array in consultation with, with fire department to make sure that, and it's also to our benefit from an operational standpoint, we didn't want to have just one way in and out for agricultural operations.
So the fire department has looked at this?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And you've come up with a plan on what, on how you're going to access the site?
We're using existing, probably you can see here, there are some existing bog roads that are sufficiently wide, all of them are, I think, 22 feet at a minimum, the fire department's looking for 16 feet, I think 12 feet drive surface with two feet shoulders, so a total of 16 feet. So all the roads are sufficiently wide enough, as is, what we've simply proposed is, I mean, if you take a drive out there now, there's some areas that probably need some stabilization, additional gravel, so we, what we just noted was our, by the direction of our field engineer, we'll stabilize those roads as necessary. There's no new road building, per se, outside of the perimeter roads that'll, that'll be constructed as part of the site work. Access to the site, there's an existing driveway on Gate Street, improved gravel surface, so we don't need a new road cut, new access to the site, we're going to piggyback on Peter's existing access to the, to the property.
Do we have any other homes around the site? How far away of any existing dwellings?
Sure, yeah, if you want, I'll just go through. So, these are, here's Gate Street, there's a row of homes along the east side of Gate Street- There's a row of homes along the east side of Gate Street, where the backs of their property, but Peter's property here. I think, without exception, there's a, there's a pretty extensive onsite wooded buffer. Most of, most of, I think all of these properties on Gate Street and then High Street are at least 1,200 feet away from the closest point of the array. So it's, there's a significant setback for, for one. And then, like, you can see from the aerial that there's an extensive wooded buffer, and in the right up to our plan, we actually looked at the thickness of that buffer in each chunk of, of property. So from our standpoint at least, the only real potential visibility to the project is down this throat of the driveway. So when you're driving along Gate Street either north or south, and you look into the property, you can look across the bog and you likely would be able to see the project. So to remedy that, we've proposed putting a landscape berm right at the driveway, close, relatively close to the road, which would basically, you know, prevent a line of sight from the road, walking or driving on the road to the project. The rest of this, you know, the entire eastern array, you can tell, is, there's like 300 feet of onsite wooded buffer everywhere. You'd have to be trespassing, basically, to see the project. So from a, and I know, you know, I've been in this business for, for a while, and I know that, that becomes, that's generally the biggest issue with solar projects, is the aesthetics and visibility, especially in a residential area. We think this is one of the, you know, more, you know, suitably cited projects we've encountered. It's, it's well removed from the butters, and it's, it's fallow land, and you can't even, you can't see this side of the project because the, the transmission easement that runs through is built on a ridge. It's probably a 30-foot-high ridge. So, you know, if you stand here, you can't see there. So from a, from a setback in screening standpoint, I think we're fully compliant with the requirements of the bylaw for all practical purposes. I'm open to input from butters or stakeholders if they disagree. But we, you know, we've got some pictures that we included in the application that are taken from the, from the western edge of the project, so right at the edge of the existing bogs, looking back towards Gate Street. So here's looking, looking due west, looking northwest, southwest, and south. So basically, you can see, all you can see from the proposed project area are the onsite woodlands. Can't see anyone's house, certainly not a, not a clear line of sight. There may be, in the wintertime with some of the deciduous trees, maybe there'll be a little bit. But again, the project is 1,000, 1,200, 1,300, sometime like eight, almost 1,800 feet in certain locations. So there's considerable site mitigation just because of the distance.
Any board members have any questions?
Where it's, where it's raised, again, could you just explain the, the height? So from, from the ground, I know you said it was 25 feet from the front to the back of the panel, but what would that consist of from the ground?
So from, for each row of panels, the, the lower, the panels will be tilted at about a 35-degree angle from horizontal and elevated in the air. And the lower edge of the panel, so the panels will be up like this in the air, the lower edge of each row of panels will be at eight feet, and then the top edge of each row of panels will be at, I think it's 15 and a half feet. We've got the dimensions and the drawings.
Okay, so where the, for the dual purpose would be, wouldn't necessarily be under the eight-foot part, but would it be rowed in sections that, how, how long would the panel be so that the areas that are?
We, we plan to farm, we hope to farm the entire footprint, even under the lowest that. We, we set eight feet as an operational height limit that we think we can work under. We might not be driving equipment under the eight-feet section, but we'll be growing under it for sure.
All right. And so to, back on that, if you were to create the berm, would it have to be an oversized berm compared to the regular berms for buffering? And again, it's only because you're going to have that one particular area where you drive in on, off the road, right?
Right. I, I, we, we proposed it as a four-foot earthen berm with six-foot planting, so you'd have 10 feet, 10 vertical feet of screening. I think if you look at sightline angles from that, that's, that's probably five more feet than you need.
Okay.
Because you get a thousand, you know, your line of sight is 1,000 feet plus. So we, I mean, if the board doesn't find it necessary to do it, we don't know whether that's a, makes it better or worse. It certainly makes the site, like, not visible.
It's a concern for neighbors.
We're happy to, yeah, we're happy to do it.
We can take a look at that, because we will schedule a site visit for this, too. Anybody else have anything?
Well, just out of curiosity, it's a state plan, and you said they're still working on stuff. Who from the state or who kind of checks up and make sure that things are still being grown under the panels and that it's still active and viable?
Well, there's a, a component of the program which requires the applicants that secure eligibility for this dual-use concept to, to file a report annually documenting the agricultural productivity, and then the state. It's not crystal clear to me, frankly, how they, I suspect it'll be a, kind of an audit-based mechanism that they'll use, that they'll take some subset of all these projects that get qualified, and they'll audit for compliance. But we, we have an obligation to grow in order to receive the incentive payment. We intend to, we've, we've developed an economically viable plan, so there's no reason for us not to grow, and we intend to. And so, the best I can.
Okay.
Now, if approved in the near future, when would you, when was the anticipated time to start this project?
We're hoping that we'll have all of the relative entitlements and that the state's new incentive program will be launched, so that we'll be ready to build, probably right around the time that it's the worst time to build, like, early winter. So whether we, if we're, if we're fortunate to be, like, shovel-ready at that point, we'll make the decision whether to start building in January or rather to start building probably in the middle of March or early April. If I had to take a guess, I would say late winter would, is when we'd likely be starting construction.
Depending on the snow depth.
We do have to wait for, there, there's some other timelines that are beyond our control. The utility, we're waiting for an interconnection approval from the utility, which is imminent. We do have to receive this approval from the state, and the state's program has to officially launch so that we can finance the project. But that stuff should all be happening this quarter.
Anything else?
No, I like the project. I think it's a good use of the land, seeing that it's been used for agricultural, for the bog and the sands. I really don't think you need the berm looking in, but we'll be able to see that when we go out there. I think it's excessive. But I love that it's so far away from everybody. I think according to the map, I think you had 6, 800. It was, it was a ways. Heavily wooded, which is perfect. This is like the perfect application for the use of alternative energy, so, plus they're going to grow. So I like it.
Anyone else? Kara?
Basically, I was going to say the same thing. I think it's a great use for the adjacent land after you're done with the sand pit. It's always the sand pit, but there's nothing there, so I think that's awesome that you guys came up with an idea to supplement yourself.
Thank you. Yeah, we're, we're very excited.
Great.
Jim, you have any questions?
No. I agree with what everyone else has said. This is the perfect spot for, for a solar project.
It's the kind of ones we like.
These are the ones we like.
All right. Anybody out in the audience like to ask a question? If you could just step up to the microphone, give us your name and address and?
Paul Rodrick. I'm a trustee for Mycock Realty, and we own 20 Gate Street, which is 38 acres to the west, those bogs right there, yep. And we own almost all the way up to Route 58. I have several questions. You've mentioned that you guys had done projects together before, and are those projects locally? How did they work out? Are they dual-use?
Yes, the projects are open there in Plymouth.
Okay.
They're operational. They believe they were designed and built the way Peter thought they were going to be. They are not dual-use. The predecessor programs didn't, you know, support that.
Okay. I'm somewhat familiar with the property, and I think the berm, in my opinion, is a waste of money. And I think that's, that's really all, all that I have. If they're, they're functioning well, but they're not dual-use, so.
That's great.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing nobody coming forward, we should schedule a site walk for this.
125% of whatever the construction cost.
Is there anything else?
Do you, Mr. Chair? I was just looking for an estimate, because we always have a bond on, on the decommissioning and stuff like that. I was just looking for that information. I saw it in the application, not considering the salvage part. We look at the total, total part of the decommissioning. And you say, San Antonio decommissioning cost gross is about $81,000.
That's correct. That's the estimate from the, from the firm that we, we hired to do the estimate.
The board standard is, is normally 125% of that to hold in bond, so just, just to keep that in mind as we move down this process. I do appreciate them providing the salvage values. We've never looked at that as a, as an option for us, so.
Okay.
Just so you know.
Okay. I mean, I, you provided that, the board, 125%, and it's a bond versus a ask-row or something, then we're, we're fine with that.
I have one more question. Does this change the 61 East status at all? Because you're, you're going to be farming all 13?
We, we, we don't expect, I'm sorry, I shouldn't try and answer.
You go ahead.
We don't expect to change the designation at all. That's one of the benefits.
Because you're up so high.
Well, because we're farming.
Yeah.
We're, we're farming.
Anything else?
One more question. I'm glad that that was brought up. Have you been in talks with the town with a PPA agreement as of yet?
We have not. And we'd be happy to. Was our understanding a little while ago that the town's load had been fully satisfied through other arrangements?
I could be misspeaking. That's up in that office, not here.
Right. I just wondered. Happy to do so. We haven't, we haven't solidified our, where the energy's going, that we have a couple different options to pursue. It's not on the critical path at the moment for this project. Having the town as an off-taker, we'd be interested in discussing. I think it would be a potential, another potential benefit to the town for the project.
Great. Thank you.
Were you planning to have, to appear at our next meeting on the 23rd, or is this going to take a while to develop? I mean, we, we do have your plans here, so I guess we'll do a site visit, and then there'll be additional engineering comments, or are we pretty much set on that?
There'll be another, there'll be another exchange, but it's, you know, they're, they're pretty close as it is, so.
Okay.
Some of the ideas that were brought up tonight about perhaps using some of the areas designated for stormwater management certainly could be used for hay, to hay production. One of the reasons I asked, I didn't, I didn't actually know that, but one of the reasons I asked is because if we can, if there's a border around the agricultural use, we talk about soil erosion protection, how can we prevent sediment from going to the basins, protect them, but still actually allow production at some point? So I think there are lots of alternatives over there that'll keep it flexible, and, you know, the way it's designed right now, we could, we could look at that a lot more closely.
All right. I guess the next thing is we'll schedule a site walk. And we already got something going on Thursday, the 18th, at 5:00. When is everyone available to do this?
I'm sticking with the Mondays aren't the best.
Would you, would anybody be available, say, for Friday? I know it's going to kind of cut into your work schedule, I mean, for everybody, but fortunately for me, I'll have that day off.
Nice to be retired. Nice to be retired.
Well, it's kind of gone from three to two now.
Oh, boy.
Next is a zero, but.
You're already there once. I'm going to say that for myself, I don't need a site walk, because I'm going to be out of town, and I don't want to delay the process.
Yep.
I think the information on the plan I can, I can gather, if I have any questions, I can always talk to Stephen. So I'm, I'm good. Next week is going to be very tough for me.
How about anybody else? I think we'd be, I think I'd just be interested in, well, I, I would kind of see, kind of like to see where it is and just what's around there, and especially to see if you're really going to need that berm there or not. Might save you something to, you know, if we go and decide that that's really not needed.
I think the 16th was the day that Will couldn't do it, correct?
16.
Originally, when we talked about the last site visit?
Yeah, I have an RDA meeting at 6 o'clock, 5 to 16th.
So this one is Tuesday better for you guys. Did you say right before the meeting?
Uh, 16th.
Before the 16th?
Or either Monday, the 22nd. Oh, Monday's not good for Jen. Yeah. Okay, so, I don't know, the 16th? Tuesday, the 16th? Would that work?
I have an appointment at 6:00. We met at 5:00. Would that? Still be able to make my?
Would that work for you? Okay. Okay.
Make a motion to have a site visit on 16th of October at 5:00?
On second?
So a motion of second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so 5:00. Does anybody want anything particularly to be marked out in the field? Yeah, I mean, how? Well, can you just kind of walk us out to the center of the property then, so that we could just kind of see, you know?
We can, we can start just by standing right there at the, at the existing driveway.
Yeah.
And looking across towards the proposed footprint. It'll give you a sense of the visual impact.
Okay.
Park a truck out over, over where it is, so you can get some sense of scale.
Okay. And the proposed, proposed area, is that, you said that's a gravel pit now?
Yeah, the western array is like, is an existing gravel pit, so.
So the eastern's the one has to get cleared out?
Yes, sir. There, there is, to be clear, there is some, I didn't mean to say clear twice, but there is some tree clearing on the western side as well. We can point out where that's happening.
Okay, that sounds good.
The western is the one that would be nowhere towards the?
Yes.
Neighbors?
Yes.
To see it, so that's the one that?
Yes.
Doesn't appear to be any neighbors, but they're concerned.
Right. Perfect.
All right. Can you, can somebody meet us there?
Absolutely. We'll be there the 16th at 5:00.
All right. So we'll continue the, have a motion to?
So I have a question, do you, Mr. Chair, to the applicant?
Uh-huh.
I am out of town on the 23rd, just for your FYI. Our next meeting is? Our next meeting is the 23rd. Do you want to continue still to the 23rd, or do you want to go on to the next meeting to have the full complete board?
What's the quorum for this board?
For special permit?
Four, and this is a six-member board?
We have, Kara is our, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
You'll have five.
We have five members and one alternate.
And so with you on, it'll be a four-member board?
You'll have these five.
Four, and you need, does it need to be unanimous for a special permit?
Four out of the five.
Four of the four if you're not here. There's an alternate.
And our alternate can vote on that as well.
Oh, so it would be a five-person board?
Yep.
Well, yeah, we, we would like to just move ahead and wrap this up. The delay would be two weeks. Would be to the meeting in November.
I want to give you the same opportunity I gave the previous applicant, just because I'm out of town, so...
Sure. Can you give us until tomorrow to think about it? I just confirm with my business partner and see what he thinks is a good decision, and we'll get back to Steve.
Sure. You can, you can schedule the, we can schedule for the next, for the 23rd, and if you decide, you know, internally that you guys need to change it, you can get ahold of Stephen and you can always continue it to that date.
That sounds...
And I apologize, it's just...
So, I appreciate you bringing it up. That sounds great to us.
I don't really see any problem with the planning board on this project. I mean, not with me, anyway, so I don't, I think we just want to view it, I don't think there should be any major problems.
Okay, appreciate that. So let's, yeah, let's schedule it for the 23rd.
What address should we meet? Is it 13 Gate Street?
It's the only, it's actually the only access on the east side of Gate Street as you drive in north on Gate Street. But, you know, there's the houses, and then you'll see, you'll see the access drive and you'll see the bog, so... Does it have a street sign?
Yeah, no, it's got a steel gate, some balloons up there if you want, something.
Right.
Birthday party.
We'll get there early and put a truck out there, so...
All right. Make a motion to continue the public hearing for the solar project to the 23rd at 7:00.
Second that.
Have a motion to second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. All right, we'll see you at the site meeting at the 16th.
Great. Thank you, folks. Thank you for your time.
Okay.
I'm asking every time to my...
Right, that's right. That's right. All right, moving on. So I'm sorry to have shuffled this around, but we're, this is a continuation of the public hearing on the application of Pro Leo Plymouth Street Realty Trust requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to sections 23, 2230, 3900, and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw located at Zimro Plymouth Street in Carver, Mass. Assesses map 18-lot 8 to allow 32-unit townhouse development in a residential agricultural area. If, excuse me, gentlemen, out in the hallway, if you could just go downstairs, thank you. Sorry.
Shuffling my order.
Well, it's like a megaphone. You can have a mouse walking across the hallway outside and you hear it in here.
Mr. Chairman, to you and the board and to the applicant, I will be excusing myself from this hearing where I am a direct abbot to this project. Thank you.
Hey, thank you all. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thanks for waiting.
Thanks. Thank you for waiting. I hope it...
Yeah, I mean, basically, we just got Glenn Perola on, the developer. The, we just got the notes back from the engineer late today around 5:00.
Okay.
I wanted to come here and just see after the walkthrough, if you guys had anything he's wanted us to address to try to move it forward before the next meeting. And we can, basically, what we got from them, we can revise.
Okay.
Guess the biggest thing is I got to get with Kevin, because, I mean, stormwater's under the Board of Health, I think, in Carver, so we're going to have to do a mound and analysis and perks or whatever.
Stormwater is the planning board.
Who does your...
You're thinking of Title V septic?
Well, no, for the, who would monitor the mound and analysis and just the tests? They want perk tests in the areas of the drainage basins, I believe.
Soil evaluations, yeah. They submit those to the board, and then I'd review them for some of the work.
Okay, does somebody want to, I guess, does somebody from the town want to oversee it? You know, my engineer will be there, but I would imagine you guys want somebody to...
Okay.
I didn't know if that would be through the Board of Health or if Kevin would do it or how you guys would do it.
Well, you have to do, you have to do perk tests for the Board of Health, for the septic areas, and I believe probably we have to do some sort of test soils testing for the roadway or for...
Observation pits.
Or observation pits.
Yeah, I didn't know, because Kevin's a soil evaluator, so I didn't know if you guys would be having him monitor them or what, how we'd do that, because that would be the thing in moving it forward, so we could just get that done. Because I can get a machine in out there, and Dan's there, so he can make himself available whenever. It's just...
It's either, we don't typically witness the test pits done for stormwater by the applicant's engineers, so sometimes it's convenient to have them done at the same time as the septic system test pits, and they're witnessed by the Board of Health, but in this case, it wouldn't be necessary for us to go see them.
So we just, you just do them and submit them? Okay.
Yeah, just, so your engineer would do them and just submit the information.
And they can contact us if they have any questions about how many, where, and all that stuff. We can just work that out in advance.
Yeah, and we didn't see, we didn't see much that, you know, seemed to be an issue. I mean, there's the, I guess the left side of the road was one thing, because we can't really change the inlet there. We need the fire road, so, and the separations are kind of there, so we'll have to rework that soil to make, you know, but, I mean, I'm sure that that's probably the biggest thing we'd have to deal with. Everything else is just, basically, answered the question. We'll put a stormwater and pollution permit in play too, so, I mean, they'll be submitting that, so everything else on there, he can revise and have back. I mean, if this is the case, like I say, we'll get right out there, do the test pits.
There is nothing earth-shattering on this one either. Again, as the rainfall depths need to be according to the standards. The one thing that I would suggest the board consider, and, you know, just for the board's knowledge, we looked only at stormwater management for this project, so, but there's some description or guidance on the performance standards of how the basins are supposed to be designed, and I suggested that the applicant look at modifying the basin shapes a bit to allow them to fit better into the landscape, whether they're more aesthetically pleasing for the project itself. Might save a little bit more cost, you know, one of the basins is kind of deep, so kind of look into that type of stuff. That's effectively the nature of the comments. Most of the others are pretty minor, but, you know, the northern basin was the same thing. It's very, the grating is very close to the property line, and what I asked them to do is see if they can move it away from the property line, provide like a 10-foot buffer between the property line and the basin excavations. It's just a good practice. You can get there and maintain it, and it's a lot easier and, you know, less risk to the butter, but nothing, again, earth-shattering that I don't think they can address. When they update the calculations, they'll have to change the basin shapes anyways, so that's kind of why I'm suggesting they look at the basin shape. And I think you know which one I'm talking about. The southern basin is kind of square.
That'd be the one at the end of the cul-de-sac, the big one?
Correct, at the main traffic circle that leads to the two roads, the basin just to the south of that.
And were you looking for depth on that, you said?
Right now, it's about nine feet deep is the minimum height between the road and the bottom of the basin. I think it can be made a little bit shallower and blended into the...
So wider for the calculations to work to hold, is that the idea?
Yeah. It doesn't have to be so deep, I don't think. I think it can be blended in a little bit better with the topo. It makes sense where it goes, you know, I'm not disputing any of that.
Yeah, it was a low point on the lot. That's what, we took a building out of there and actually put that there, because everything just seemed to drain there.
All the base, the other basin's in the exact area of an existing low point, so hydrologically speaking, it's set up pretty well, so... I saw, again, just to reiterate, I did not look at landscaping on this one or anything else. I just wanted to make it clear.
Okay, so you still have additional things to look at?
No, that was the limitation of our...
Oh, okay, all right.
...scope of work on this one, so, but...
Could you send a memo to the engineer, the design engineer?
No.
About the...
Send only to Stephen, but I can certainly...
Oh, okay, or somebody, yeah.
Give you my card, you can make myself available, we can talk through some of the technical stuff.
Okay.
So we got that. Is that what you forwarded to us, Stephen?
That was the stormwater review. It was a technical review done by Fosse &amp; O'Neil back in July 9th. That was when we had the preliminary.
Was that the first one? Did we get that?
Correct, yes. I can send it to you again, though.
Okay, yeah, we had that one, yeah.
Some of the limitations, Mr. Chair, that we experienced was that the review and inspections account had depleted, and frankly, if so desired, we can certainly shake down the applicant's support.
Oh, sure, what the hell.
And then conduct a updated, more thorough review of...
I like the idea of just going with it. I mean, we have everything, like I say, I mean, we designed subdivision regs on it, and like I say, the stuff he did address in the, in the road, I think there was a flat spot or something, or, you know, Bob's going to just rework everything that he suggested, and, I mean, landscaping, and, I mean, we gave you the basic landscape design. I am going to have a landscape architect when we move forward going through it that'll do a landscape design, and they'll actually come in and do the landscaping when it goes out to bid, you know? It's just we don't like to go too crazy until, you know, probably needs a couple of no's and it's a waste of money. So that's the, that's where we're at with that.
Anything else?
Nope, not at this time, Mr. Chair.
Anything from the board members before we continue this hearing to the next? And you would probably want to see us on the 23rd.
I'd like to. Can I ask one question? I mean, after you guys did the walkthrough and anything, is there anything that you guys seen that you'd want us to address now? I mean...
Well, I guess for public record, if there's anybody that would like to say something.
I thank you for the intense hike that you took.
It's good for you.
No, and then my main concern going in was just seeing the houses that went beyond the 60 to the 40, and, like we said, there was that one, and you had said many, many, many times you're willing to work with that guy. So that's, that's great.
Exactly, and like I say, the other two were turned, and like I say, we're still, we're still willing to put like some screening in there and plant some stuff that, you know, grows in in the backyards, you know what I mean? But we do, we did turn the buildings away from the, so they're not directly in people's backyards.
We reiterated it many times.
Yeah, and we will, like I say, we want to, we kind of want to make it as easy for everybody, to be honest with you.
That was great. Thank you.
We'll take you on another hike if you want.
And we can, we can put that in as a condition about some screening.
About the hike? Yeah.
The height is all right, that's done.
Yeah, no, like, yeah, that's fine. I mean, we can, and I spoke to one about a, and I mean, I'm willing to go out and talk to the three houses that are close, and we can just see if they got some concerns, we can put something in those areas, you know?
Anyone else? You have anything? Kara? Kevin?
That was it. Our biggest concern was that one house that we couldn't...
Yeah, the, yeah, the one, yeah.
Keep the existing vegetation there and trees and then...
Yeah, well, like I say, we're going to, we're going to clear back just to get in, and then we're just going to, we'll take the backyards and thin them out, and like I say, we'll...
Get it look nice.
Exactly. We, like I said, it doesn't, it's no good for us for houses looking out the back windows of people either, so we try to keep as much as we can too, you know? In their condos, so that people don't expect like a big backyard, you know?
Well, I was just going to say, I notice in a lot of the areas that I work, if you go to a 55, you know, age-restricted area, people don't have a whole big yard, because that's the idea of not having acres of yard to...
Yeah, we just finished one, like I say, and it's like 20 foot behind the buildings, you know, and it's in a woods line, you know, so, I mean, you just get a grass strip in your decks and, you know, it's basically how, you know, most of them are, because you want to keep the maintenance down for the condo fees too, you know?
Right. All right, anybody in the audience have any questions or concerns? Seeing no one come forward, entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to next date of 23rd of October, 7:00.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing.
I don't understand.
Well, I'll say I second that.
Yeah, exactly. None of us understand.
Have a motion in a second, and we all understand that, I guess, all right. And it's for the 23rd. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
All set?
Thank you, you're all set.
Thank you.
We'll see you the 23rd.
Thanks, guys. I'll see you then. Thank you.
All right. All right, we go to planning board member notes. Anybody have any they'd like to say other than talking about our hikes? Planning directors notes.
Great job tonight, team. Look forward to the 23rd.
Same again. We have the minutes of September 25th, 2018.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of September 25th.
Actually, was it the... Oh, okay, so that, yeah, that's what it was, September 25th.
Do you have a copy, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I think I do somewhere, somewhere in this background. He has Fridays to read it.
I'll second Jim's motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Oh, I lost my agenda. Okay, our next meeting date, yeah, our next meeting date is October 23rd, and so entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn. I'll second that.
Motion to second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And good night, everyone.